All right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We will call a meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer followed by the pledge. Dear wise and loving Father, Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live, work, in and around our village of Hicksville. It is in your most precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
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 Thank you. You had in your council packet the September 19th meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve those.
I would make that motion, Mayor, to approve the minutes from this Monday, September 19th. Yeah. September 19th meeting.
Did I say December?
No.
Won't surprise me. You have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Krapreski.
Yes.
Sedlin.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Baker.
Have the bills in front of you? Does anyone have any questions about them?
I have two questions, Mayor. I see where we've got $1,022 worth of dirt for the parks for the field. And then I also seen in the minutes that they need at least six to seven more park board minutes. I'm curious why the village gives away all that dirt down there in the industrial park and we don't use it for our own projects.
Well, because I've communicated with the park, I can tell you that this is special dirt for the ball fields and they've crowned several fields.
The regular dirt, I think you're gonna see a lot of stones and rocks in it. They don't want that stuff on a ball dime. That's what I know.
But that's a gravel quarry. They don't have dirt over there. They don't have clay and things like we have over here in Defiance County.
And we have park board member Rick Belton here with us tonight. And maybe he can answer any other questions you may have about that.
Yeah, what we're doing over there is crush gravel. Crush it for just like a dust.
Like a powder?
Yes. And we have to fill the field over there because on field one already, we put just regular dirt on it and we have to go through and pick the dirt and stuff, the rocks and stuff, all over the little kids. So that's why, and the reason why they had to get more is because the boys filled on field three, took more dirt than we thought. We thought three loads was enough. We better protect two more loads.
I noticed a low spot and water's way on one of those fields today, I think.
The other question I had was pertaining to this sewer flow measuring that we continue to pay $500 a month for. And are they giving us any results? There's probably a thing for Kent. If anybody knows if we get results back from them or if they're just taking the $500 a month and rolling on.
Pretty much it's taking the five from my, you know, the years we've been doing this with Gene Rigby, I believe, and his company. I mean, it's collecting the data every month or when, we don't look at it. I mean, E.P. might look at it, but hopefully when the separation projects happen, we're gonna see, that's when they wanna see, okay, how much water are you pulling out of the system? I mean, I think that's what's gonna be.
They are giving you numbers every month.
Oh, we can get them, yeah. They can look at numbers.
Not, we can get them. Are they giving you numbers?
I haven't seen it personally. No, I wouldn't.
I can tell you that Kent and I were driving around last week and Kent told me that some of them are gonna be pulled because they said there's no longer a need to gather data on those. So I do know some are coming out.
Great. Hopefully that $500 will diminish. That is all I have, Mayor.
What's the auto servant? I'll see what company is that. The third one now. That's down at Defiance. I just never seen that.
I noticed.
They didn't give us government pricing on our police cruisers for tires. We save almost half on both of them.
Okay, I was just curious. I've never seen that vendor before.
The one is the more is we had to have some fronting work done on it and I didn't have.
Okay, that's all right. That's fine.
A lineup for them because we knew we're gonna get tires and that's why they wanted them. And I did price tires at Bob's Auto Repair and Intentional Chevy. And they were almost as low as $0.50.
Thank you, Monty.
Thanks.
Any other questions about the approval list? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You have park board minutes in your packet. And you have, well, I guess I'll ask, do any committees of council have anything to report at council tonight?
Water sewers gonna meet this Thursday and discuss a couple of water sewer issues. Four o'clock here in council room. I don't think there's anything else going on then. That's this Thursday, October 6th, four o'clock. And I did hear back from one of the refuge companies. Their district manager and regional manager stopped by. They are interested maybe taking a look at our recycling, general pickup and weekly pickup. They do a couple of communities here in Ohio, Edgerton, I believe, Bryan, places like that. They said they come in and throw some numbers, some ideas. They wanted to get some tonnage, some numbers from Kent. And I know since he was gone, they were gonna come back and talk to him directly. But nothing set in stone. Just got the numbers and kinda see what they could do if there was a way to save some money that way.
Thank you. Sidewalk, we're gonna meet the 17th after the council meeting. Nick, Ron and I.
And I have questions, Diane. Street lighting property. If you remember, we discussed demolition on buildings in the park. Has that just died or are we doing anything with it?
No, Ron, it has not died. We have a quote from Mark Savage to demolish a building and I talked to Shannon Watson this morning and he had a few questions before he put his bid in. So we are taking bids and demolishing the buildings and...
That would be a great asset to the community to get them down and everything, backfilled so they can settle out through the...
Yeah, we wanna get it done as soon as possible, but we...
And another...
I have difficulty on getting our bids quickly.
Another thing is where are we at with this building?
Well, I found on my desk this morning a drawing of two choices for the front door, to redesign the front door with handicap entranceway. And we, Kent has a quote for the flooring, I'm pretty sure, and is getting a quote for the painting of the hallways. And we discussed where to move people, but nothing's set in stone yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have questions? Okay. Going on to the administrator's report. Kent left us, I guess. I said that he needs council to approve a change order for the CDBGA paving project. There were adjustments due to quantities and the additional amount of the change order is gonna be $3,350.93. Would anyone like to approve that? His explanation's there in the first paragraph.
Well, I would like to say I'm not an expert in how all that works, but it says that the reason for this is some extremely bad subsurface conditions. Now, these people put the bids out for the job, wouldn't they? Shouldn't they know that before they put the bid out? They should know what they're getting into before.
That's why we bid projects.
Yeah, so why are we having to eat this?
No, I did, I was against it.
How soon does it end?
Doesn't say. The...
It's all completed, isn't it?
Yeah, I would assume so.
I'm quite confident that it is. We did a bunch of patching and some street paving.
And the main right there.
And it's on our approved bills list. So I guess that doesn't make any difference now.
Well, I just was curious. They just...
It does matter, Ron, because she hasn't got, she hasn't got the check in the mail and it's... I mean, if it makes you feel better in a way.
Which one do we have?
Right.
Has he adjusted them all?
It's a good question to ask of Kent. I'm sure he's got a good explanation.
But still, that's, I mean, I used to bid projects every day and if I made a mistake, I ate it. Only thing that got any extras is if they added something.
If we had to.
If we had, if the village had a change order, yes.
I would say you stay with the bid. That's just me. It's only $3,300 bucks, but $3,300 bucks here and $3,300 bucks there.
Exactly. Shall we, what do we have to do? Retract paying that? Go back to the bills again?
Well, I would just, I would ask Cheryl to hold it. Don't mail it out.
I think he's saying no because we already approved the whole bill list. There needs to be something in the minutes, I guess, saying approved with the exception of the...
Well, you could approve the bid amount.
Right. That couldn't be the amount that's in the bill in the list, listed in the...
You dug $3,300.
So there needs to be some clarification so that Cheryl's motion, so I can rescind my motion.
If they get upset and wanna sue us over this, you're gonna be the one defending.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You need to make a motion to rescind the prior approval and then once that, assuming it properly gets approved, then somebody can make a new motion to approve the bills, less that bill or rescind my motion.
Well, I think we need to pay them what the bid was.
Right.
But that can be in the second.
Second motion.
So I'm making a motion to rescind the prior motion to approve in the bills on the second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sedlin.
Yes.
So now we should approve, my mask correct, $43,450. Is that the correct number?
It should be a motion to...
So I'll make, I'll make the amendment to... I'll make a motion to approve the bills with the amendment of paying, who is it?
Land construction.
Paying $43,450.0 cents. In the next meeting, we can change it if we get a good reason. Yep.
Kent, it'd be nice if Kent was here, but he's not and he'd probably explain it.
Well, at least pay what the bid was for now. Second. Make the motion second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Sedlin.
Yes.
Going on with the administrator's report. The second paragraph mentions the streetlights and signs. Kent wanted you to know that he made a mistake, that the daily readings are not gonna be around 90 kilowatts per day. It's gonna be more like 33.
Yeah, it sounds a lot better.
So... And then he asked AEPM to remove the two red pole streetlights, which are no longer needed. And he had a splashback meeting on the 27th. There were two proposals turned in. We had some issues to investigate before the committee moves forward. Four people were interviewed for the sewer position. He decided to move Austin Zedek from the street department to assist Jeff. And then three sewer projects are moving on. The Ogen Street should be getting wrapped up shortly with the final work of the cleanup and paving. Ant Whip Drive has started a short time ago. The road closure effective today. Should start working northwards. Columbia Pearl will begin probably this week. And he's waiting for the paperwork to advertise Haver Drive. And design work on South Main and South Bryan is going on, ongoing. And then the maintenance work on the north water tower is complete, but we are waiting for the final lab results before it can be put back in service. Leaf collection will start once conditions warrant and Kent would like the residents to know, do not leave your piles of limbs there with your leaf piles. Don't bury them because they will not pick up your leaves if it's mixed with brush and twigs. And don't mix your dog doo-doo and garbage and litter with your leaves either.
I do have one question going back to interviews for the sewer position. Was Austin, I mean, I wish Kent was here 'cause I just have a question. If Austin was chosen for one reason or another over anybody else, is Austin gonna...
Well, out of the four applicants, two turned it down.
Right.
Changed their minds. And, and I mean, Jeff is sitting here. He could answer it better than me.
Basically three of them turned it down.
Okay. Okay, three turned it down.
So is Austin interested in trying to get his license too? Oh, okay, that's what I wondered.
He's gonna get his license, like even some books to start reading. He's gonna run a part of the court. Or can you give, probably have to start the year before he can even start class. One just started about a month ago. Next one's gonna start January, February. And that's not...
That's not an option anymore, man.
Well, that's what I've been getting to. If we're gonna have somebody in that position, we should have a license.
Yeah, he's gonna go. First time around, he probably won't have enough time to get his actual license. It'll be an operator and training license. Then once he gets his time in, then he'll get his.
Okay.
He wanted to test the handles. He'll get his operator's license when he gets the time.
Thank you, Jeff. We will go on to the solicitor's report.
One thing I have is ordinance 2016-14 in which we recommend an ordinance preventing the fortified ordinances in the village of Hicksville, Ohio. Section 18, 1.091 granting a filing exemption to retirees and disabled individuals of top taxable income.
Is that what we're introducing?
And people under... This is the final thing that we talked about at the last meeting. Our prior ordinance had, I don't know, I won't say forever, but for a long time had always included this exemption. And then last year when we went with the states, all the states mandated change and everything like that, that was one of the things. After we got it instituted and everybody was going back through a rebid, decided that we'd like the, not everybody, I guess, but staff and people that handle those, they'd like that put back in there. So that copies the language from the old ordinance identically.
Is this the first reading?
There's no need to, I mean, it's not.
My, because in section two, on the back page at the very bottom, it says, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency.
I'll change that before the next, that's a... Change the, from the one that we did last week.
Okay.
I was cut and paste in there, so no need for it to be an emergency.
Since we're on the topic of village taxes here, Kim was telling me that there is a meeting, a tax meeting coming up, maybe more of a training session that they would like, and it's in, I think, the Toledo area. They would like us to invite all of our tax preparers to go there and learn about all the changes that the state of Ohio has mandated on us because it's all new to people. And the cost of the training is $75 each. And, you know, I guess, my thought was that Kim should notify and invite all of the tax preparers that we deal with to go there and learn about the changes in the Ohio municipal income tax laws. Another thing that I thought we could do is offer to pay their $75 fee and if they go, we'll reimburse it. Try to maybe to entice some of them to go. I don't know, but this will help us in the long run because we will not have so many mistakes in people's tax returns. Because if they don't familiarize themselves with this new Ohio municipal income tax laws, it's gonna cause us a lot of work. So you might just think about it. Do you know how soon that meeting is, Cheryl? Okay. But just think about it. I would like to try to get a lot of our tax preparers there if we could and...
You're talking to the local tax preparers?
Even the ones out of town, the ones from Fort Wayne, Indiana, 'cause they're not gonna be familiar with Ohio tax changes. I mean, they probably educate themselves to do that somehow.
I would think they would be obligated to educate themselves.
But I think the more that we can help them, the better it will be for us, so...
I would be in favor of our locals. Three tax preparers in this town?
More than you think.
Oh, I am.
I can think of five right off hand right here in town. But, so anyway, you can think about it and see what you think. I'd just like to avoid any problems we can. And in the long run, it'd help our tax preparers because if they're, it'd help our residents, I'm sorry. Because if our residents are contacted with errors on their tax returns, then they're gonna have to contact their tax preparers. So that's a vicious cycle trying to get income tax problems, mistakes straightened out. So anything we can do to avoid that, I'm in favor of. Okay. So, anything else, Troy? All right. Well, then we will go to the department head reports and we will start with Chief Ballinger.
I haven't watched tonight. I just, Nate Allen, he's been here for a year and he's done a great job. He's young, he's eager. But it's a year he's been here. The only time he missed any work is when his father passed away. He didn't even take that off. I had a point, you know, he needs to be adopted. He was your family and I would like to see him promoted from a patrolman one to, I'm sorry, patrolman two to patrolman one with the appropriate mileage.
I will recommend Nate Allen be promoted from a patrolman two to patrolman one.
I would make the motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation to promote Nate Allen to position one.
I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Krapreski.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sedlin.
Yes.
Baker.
And also, we're getting the, we finally got out to the police department. They put paving down in the parking lot. They were there last week. They've done some grinding. They put a thin coat on where the concrete was over the turf. They said if they didn't get something over it, it'd be next summer before they could pave it. So they put a thin layer on. We're supposed to come back tomorrow and finish up the pre-paving. And then they're gonna come out Wednesday and do the paving, so...
Is Luke doing that?
Yes. And I'd also like to thank Justin Coon for letting us park our police cars and our personal vehicles over his place next door. That would be a great compliment.
We should probably write him and thank him for that.
Okay.
And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
I'll write myself a note about that. By the way, Chief Scott Kramer, do you have anything for council tonight?
I don't have anything of authority from inside. I don't have any access to it. Chief Monty, and then, we had the M.T. stepped out. Jason's having a hard time for some reasons. Yeah, that brings us to the lead runner off. Who are you members gonna ask? And they had 40 men run some stuff down.
Ah, thank you for the information. That's quite a few. Jason's still living in Toledo?
No, he's still in town.
Is he?
In Fort Wayne, a lot older than this man.
Yeah, that's too bad. He's paramedic, isn't he?
Yep. Well, we wish him the best. And thank you for letting us know what the numbers are and stuff.
Any classes, anybody generate?
We've done real well, though. Keep the numbers up.
I think she's got a few interested, but we're waiting to see when the class comes.
All right, thank you.
That we do, yeah.
Yep, Chief Ballinger.
Cheryl Smith, do you have anything to report?
I have your statement of cash. And I'll send out the current, the driving ones as of the end of the month. September, I think. The numbers are correct, but not this round.
I appreciate getting that, Cheryl. Can't speak for her, but I'd like to look at it.
Yep, that's nice.
And then we, I'm sorry. We heard from Haynes talking about their building.
You know, I called him a few weeks ago and he said he was gonna be coming to Hicksville and he would get together with me, but I haven't heard from him since. I guess I should follow up with him.
You have your, the income tax report for September. And the numbers suggest... I don't know if the girl's standing down there.
Right.
She's right.
Yep.
And then you also have a copy of, I refer that Don keeps of the village. Two places where there's water, but we got a deal and we still need it. Like how much water can you use? This is for the village town park.
And we just had a new one added at the Veterans Memorial and I would like to thank our village employees for putting in that frostless hydrant.
Jesse and company did a nice job. She was on board, but, so, I think Jamie Miller did the trenching and it's in.
Chances are, we might not need water too often there, but it will certainly be a convenience to have it, so...
Oh, yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
They did a nice looking job on there. That's all you have?
On this, did we do anything when Detective Charlie Long was here?
Never made one, that's a first. Yeah, we never worked on that problem.
Well, I just have a couple of things. First of all, I would just like to, you know, we have a cat problem in Hicksville and we have for years. So I just want you to know that there, on October 14th, there is going to be a male neuter clinic for $10 at the Defiance Humane Society. You need to call and preregister. That's male cats only for $10. So if you're one of the residents that just has a cat that runs loose, that's your family pet, please take responsibility for helping us control the cat population in town. And then, I think I mentioned it before, but I'll mention it again. There is a Community Housing Impact Preservation Grant available now for homeowners in Defiance County. And so Mommy Valley Planning is now accepting applications for home repairs such as roofs, gutters, lead paint issues, heating systems, plumbing, water and sewer tap-ins, septic tank issues, electrical and structural issues. So if you have problems in your home that you cannot afford to fix, I'm sure that goes by your income, you can contact our office and we'll give you the telephone number for Mommy Valley Planning in Defiance if you can't find it yourself. And then it is time for the Christmas cruise through to get fired up. And if any of you went through it last year, you saw the Christmas card lane. And we got some information on that in case the village of Hicksville would be interested in participating in the... that in case the Village of Hicksville would be interested in participating in the Christmas card lane. There's some samples here in case you didn't get the opportunity to see that last year and I'm sure that they would welcome any of your volunteer time if you could do that.
Does the village, does the village put anything in there? I think it'd be appropriate if we did.
We gave them our old Christmas decorations for displays and in fact, in this nice brochure that they sent me, they also offer you the option of buying big, beautiful decorations and they give you the amounts of money and I, the Christmas card lane, you can get one of the Christmas cards, I think it was $100, $130, one time fee includes everything and, um...
And it's reusable, it's not just stuff.
Right.
I would make a motion that we do such a thing.
And I would second it.
The Christmas card?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Village of Hicksville and its employees.
I thought that would be real nice, too.
What about you?
Christmas card lane, Cheryl, don't let me forget that.
We need a road on that or what do you need?
Well, you can.
If you want.
Never hurts to have something on the record.
Seeing him as anti-Christmas here.
Baker?
Yes.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kratzky?
Give him the next picture.
Thank you.
We'll be beyond, huh? Hopefully.
Cheryl, warm up the budgets coming in, if you've got them from department heads.
Oh, yeah.
So sometime in October, hopefully.
Did you go to the, the departments specifically to have them in?
I didn't until the end of the month, but I've got that on the app, too.
Okay.
I got all the information and the ID.
Okay. All right. All right. I would just like to take this time to thank Ron Daniels for his service to the Village of Hicksville. I believe it was around 10 years. Ron was the superintendent of our wastewater treatment plant. He was dependable and he, he took his job seriously and I would just like to give him a public thank you for his service to the village. And I pass a card around if you want to sign to.
He did an outstanding job, was very knowledgeable of what he did, what he missed.
Right, right. And I would like to send our sympathy to village employee Billy Laney who lost his mother this past week. Billy's a big help to us at our recycling center and around town. So, and I hope Kent Miller's having a very good vacation this week. I am so surprised he didn't come tonight. So, any, oh, does anyone in the audience have anything that they would like to address council about? Well, thank you for coming and if there's nothing else, I guess someone could make a motion to adjourn, adjourn.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Kratzky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Thank you.